I usually sit right here.
Okay.
I just got here. Not weird, but yeah.
We're going to call the meeting to order for the Brunswick County Board of Commissioners for May 19th, 2025. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Appreciate your being involved. I've asked Commissioner Williams to please lead us in an invocation and pledge. If you would all rise, gentlemen, remove your caps if you are wearing.
Before I do the invocation, I do want to recognize two people here who have had anniversaries in the past two days. Commissioner Randy Thompson's wife has put up with him for forty-four years. And our manager is here today on his fortieth anniversary. And I'm, yeah, so I'm glad you took your wife out yesterday because she would have been mad if you brought her here tonight. But let's give them both a round of applause. You can bow your heads, please. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to live in this great county and this great state and what I believe is the best nation on earth. And we just ask that you would guide us in our proceedings tonight and help us to be mindful of the needs of the people we serve and to focus on doing the right thing for the people of this county and also that you'd keep everyone here safe as we travel home. I do want to thank you for all the young people that are in this room and who are stepping up and getting involved in a way that I certainly did not do when I was their age. And I just pray that you would bless their involvement in the youth council and, uh, and just keep them safe and help them grow through that experience. And we ask these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the highest court for the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner William. Are there any adjustments to the agenda this evening?
Can I make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Thompson and Williams?
Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I have, uh, one brief introduction of a new staff member, uh, for the board tonight. Um, Mr. Robert Billingham is here. He'll come up. Uh, Mr. Robert is, uh, our new operations services director for the county.
Welcome.
Uh, he comes to us with many years of experience in a similar role in Maryland where he was with, uh, Chugash.
Chugash.
Chugash Government Services.
Yep.
Um, which did a lot of contracting with, um, military groups and other, other things that went as well.
Welcome.
We're happy to have him.
Welcome to God's country.
Welcome to the team.
It's a pleasure to be with you all and look forward to working with you. And please reach out to me if I can help with anything. Thanks so much.
You will. That's me.
You've got some big shoes to fill, I gotta tell you. What's that sound? I've heard. Hopefully, uh, I can do that for you. We're going to put his cell number in the minutes?
Yeah.
Just kidding.
There you go. Thank you.
With that adjustment, I'll again make a motion for approval.
And I'll still second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? All right. We reach public comments. Nobody signed up for public comments. Is there anybody that would like to come up? You have three minutes to state your case on whatever topic you would like. Nobody? Thank you. All right. We've reached the approval of the consent agenda. I'm sure everybody's had a chance to look through it. We've had it for a few days. So, uh, I will accept a motion to approve.
Somebody.
Cook, second?
I'll second.
Williams? All those in favor? Well, any, okay. I guess there's no discussion anyway. Moving on. Presentation, cooperative extension. Amy Mead?
Yeah, really.
We, we love seeing this.
Come on.
Yeah, we like this.
Round to the front here so the people can see.
Yeah, the cameras, the cameras this way. Come on around this way.
Come on.
Put their backs, all right, y'all face us, so go in front of the.
Yep.
There you go.
There.
Yeah.
Nice crowd.
Hello, good evening, I am Jamie Lester, this is Amy Mead. I am the four H agent for Brunswick County. And tonight I would like to introduce you to our Brunswick County 2025 Youth Council. A few months ago, at the end of last year, I was tasked with getting a youth council together. And I was a little nervous about doing it. It was a little intimidating, not gonna lie, but I had a great group of four Hers who was already really excited about stepping up, wanting to take on leadership, take on that role and being officers in their clubs who wanted to step up and do it. And so here they are today. We are missing a few currently that's not here tonight due to some other commitments they had. But right now this is it. So over the next year, a couple of goals that we have is to help the youth learn to identify their own leadership skills. As everyone has their own different uniques and skill sets that they can bring. To build strength of self and others, to acquire competencies in communication, group process, relationship building, planning and organization, diversity assessment, service learning and much more. The youth council will have the opportunity to run for and hold officer positions as all of our four H clubs have that opportunity also, they will get to do that as well. They get to attend district, state and national events and plan and implement community service projects. We also hope to ask partnerships for other leadership within the county. So other department leads to kind of step in, help teach every once in a while, see career development, kind of what's out there, see what sparks their interest to kind of get them past high school and further their paths. So this is 2025 Youth Council.
Hey, thank you.
They're like, yes.
Stand where Megan tells us as usual.
Get the leadership, y'all want to come and get on this?
Yeah, y'all need to be around here as well.
Yeah.
And we'll probably be rearranged momentarily here.
Might be two lines. Sideways, go sideways.
Short ones in front.
There you go, turn it, turn it.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all so much.
I bet you a couple of those live in my district. You can have this seat.
You're welcome to stick around, but we wouldn't blame you if you left.
That would show leadership, leadership if you left. All right. Moving on to the administrative report. Neil, you have something for us on the Lockwood Folly dredging project?
Yes, sir. Uh, we made some progress on the Lockwood Folly, uh, shallow inlet, uh, drag.
Yes, sir. We made some progress on the Lockwood Folly shallow inlet draft project. Oh, we've been in communication with the state DEQ as well as the Corps of Engineers to get this project moving. We're at a point now where they have completed their survey of the area. The project that they have for us will dredge the Lockwood Folly inlet to a depth of eight feet within the dredge box there. They're going to use the side caster dredge the merit. This is the side caster. It's not a pipe dredge, so it doesn't put sand on any of the beaches. It's just scooping it and putting it on either side. That's the one that's available currently. This project would, if we are able to move forward with this, be scheduled for late June, July is what we're looking at as far as a timeframe on that. The ask or the total project cost is seven hundred and forty-four, five hundred. NCD DEQ will pay a little bit over half a million dollars for that, which is seventy-five percent of the total cost. That comes from the state shallow draft inlet fund. Our match would be twenty-five percent, which would be the local match. That totals up to one hundred eighty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. When we've done these projects in the past, Brunswick County will take half of that local match. And then the other half would be split between the jurisdictions of Oak Island and Holden Beach. That's the way it has historically been. So if we're able to go with that, which is what we would certainly intend, Brunswick County shares would be the ninety-three thousand and sixty-two, while Holden and Oak Island would each be responsible for forty-six thousand. We've had good conversations with Holden Beach. They are on board. Oak Island is still kind of considering this. We don't have a firm yes from them yet. But in order to keep this project moving forward and meeting the schedule that the Corps has that's available, that the dredge is available, we would, staff would recommend that we go ahead and that you authorize the county paying the entire match, excuse me, of one hundred and eighty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. And then that we get, look to get the reimbursement from the two jurisdictions so that we would go ahead and pay that money upfront, and then we would look to get that money back from Holden Beach and Oak Island here in the future.
Everybody okay with that?
Where's the money coming from?
We have a reserve that we set aside for these type of projects, and we've got more than enough available to cover what he's proposed.
And Chairman, I believe that the merit is the only operational dredge the Corps of Engineers has at this time. It certainly is. I understand two weeks ago it was in Guantanamo Bay. The pipeline dredge, I understand, is in Memphis and is in disrepair. And the other one that they have, that's a hopper dredge, I understand, is in being repaired as well. So the only thing they do have is a side caster. Somebody asked why. It's because the only thing they've got.
And it'll shoal back in within two weeks.
Yeah.
Well, hopefully not, but yeah, it's better than nothing.
Yep. Any other comments?
Make a motion for approval.
A second.
Thompson, Cook? Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Recommended budget ordinance, Mr. Stone?
Thank you. Excuse me, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Tonight, the budget I'm going to present is fundamentally the same as I took five hours to present two weeks ago. So since it's mostly the same, I'm going to walk through the highlights of it and spend a little more time telling you what's different about about the budget tonight. But the primary changes are based upon the the feedback we received from the five of you at the at the workshop two weeks ago. We moved some one-time expenses to some ARP-enabled and other one-use funding sources. And some of our department directors have been able to fine tune some of their requests. So this budget is in balance at your current tax rate of point three four two. And again, I'll say, as I said before, our team, excuse me again, greatly appreciates the support we have from all five of you. You you have given us good directions as to the the things you'd like to see and 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 not see and the services you want the county to to provide, and and we all very much appreciate that. As we went into this, our principles continue to be that we try to balance fiscal responsibility, your strategic priorities, and any statutory obligations we may have. The document very much emphasizes your county goals and priorities. We have conservative, yet we believe realistic revenue and expenditure numbers. It preserves a strong fund balance to maintain our current bond rating, which our finance director reminded me just before the meeting that Brunswick County Brunswick County government now has a higher Moody's bond rating than the United States government does. So I think that speaks well for your fiscal.
High bar to achieve.
Really? I was thinking the same thing.
Let's see. Or was it? We provide flexibility to manage uncertainty in changing circumstances. You know, as I spoke at the the budget workshop a couple of weeks ago, while generally things are positive, the level of uncertainty about particularly state and federal funding sources is is higher than I've really seen in in my career. And I started in nineteen eighty, so seen quite, quite, quite a bit. And it maintains your current property tax rate of point three four two zero. I I will will say again, we've thanks in in part to our finance director's brilliance. We've moved enough stuff around to hold that rate, but but I I've still feel obligated to tell you that that going forward with the population growth we have in the county and the service demands the growing population brings about. I think it's going to be challenging, if not impossible, to keep our tax rate this low in the future. I think there are going to be more service demands, more demands to support our educational partners and things that are really gonna force us to to look for additional local revenue in the future. As far as employee retention, recruitment, and succession planning, the budget contains the three percent market adjustment for all employees who meet expectations. Merit increases of from one point seven five percent to two point three percent for employees who meet expectations. Two point four five to three point three five percent merit for employees who exceed and three and a half to three point seven five merit for the county's highest, most exceptional performers. And those amounts are based upon the numerical score on on each employee's evaluation. And that that highest tier typically is ten percent or less of of employees. We're proposing to maintain our benefits. And we'll continue to provide training resources and equipment to facilitate high service levels. We want to continue to build appropriate staff capacity for our external service functions and internal support. We're proposing to add fifty-one new positions, forty-two in government services, and nine in the enterprise funds. We'll continue to evaluate and improve the effectiveness of controls, communications, and systems. We'll work to meet the needs of expanding operations, a larger fleet, and heavier workloads to continue to provide strong public safety for a growing county, to enhance our emergency recovery resources for staff and residents, improve service response time in an environment of increased service demands, expand library services at Harper and Barbie, and enhance our parks and recreation experiences, and improve health and social services in our community and meet mandated service guidelines. We'll continue funding to increase cybersecurity, maintaining our current computer replacement program, and provide technology and software support. We have an increase of eight point nine percent in the funding agreement with Brunswick County Schools for their operating budget, resulting from the growth in the ad valorem taxes and the recently executed funding agreement. There'll be an increase of seven point one percent to Brunswick Community College to support existing programs and three hundred and fifty thousand for the foundation grant that provides tuition assistance. That's the Brunswick Guarantee Program. An increase of eight percent to Brunswick Senior Resources to support programs at five district senior centers provide full-year support for the newly completed Ashwakamal multi-use facility and offset the reduction in the federal home and community care block grant. It also includes two million, three hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars as a county capital reserve transfer for an EOC and HHS building that began design in FY twenty-four, twenty-five.
Steve, just before you move on, the new HHS building. How long before we break ground on it?
I asked the planners at our our last meeting. And as of right now, they think early first quarter of calendar year twenty-six.
Okay, thank you.
Sir. Here's a chart of our population growth. Phenomenal growth. We're adding literally thousands of people a year. We're not only the fastest-growing county in in percentage, but we're fourth in actual raw numbers of of gain in in residents, which is really a a pretty phenomenal number. And that's really what's driving a lot of the demand for services. Here's a a quick summary of our total budgets over the last few budget cycles and the recommended fund balance appropriation. We're recommending that the same fund balance appropriation as the prior year. And of course, since the budget has has grown by about fourteen million dollars. No, about sixteen million dollars. That's a smaller percentage of of the general fund. Here's a summary of of each of those general fund sources and and the percent change over the the prior year. Property tax revenues. We we have steady growth, but not as fast as the growth in our population, which is again why I I keep reminding that I believe in most cases that that residential growth really doesn't pay for itself in in terms of of local revenues. Sales tax growth, again, healthy, but but not at the same curve as our population growth. In the general fund and general government, our our recommendation would be about a five percent increase. Central services, it's one and a half percent. Public safety, six and a half percent. No change in transportation. About seven percent growth in environmental protection. About seven and a half percent in economic development. A reduction in human services, but that's more for some technical reason than than any real phenomenon, I think I would say. In education, six point six percent growth. Culture and Recreation, fourteen and a half percent. And then our transfers are is about a thirty-one percent reduction from the the prior year. And again, that's because of things moving from general fund to to reserves. So your total expenditures of the general fund would would be up about five point seven percent. Our debt service would come in at four point three percent of recommended expenditures. Your debt service policy says that your debt would not exceed ten to thirteen percent. So you can see there we're well below the lower number there. So you're in very good shape as far as how much debt service we have to finance. Here's a pie chart of the tax levy distributions. See, the the single biggest chunk, almost forty-four percent, goes to education. And the the next biggest portion is public safety at about twenty-one percent. Now, we'll read all the others. In the general fund, general government, total compensation is an increase of a four. Public, public safety is twenty-seven, central services two, human services four, culture and recreation five, and the others are really not a a net change. The market adjustment for salaries of three percent equates to two point eight million dollars. The merit pools, another two point six million. And there is a mandatory increase in the retirement program of of one percent. That's the the county's contribution, and that's one point eight, almost one point nine million dollars. So the total increase there in in compensation is seven point three, almost seven point four million. Okay, fee changes. There are a number of fee changes related to advance and basic life support services. And we're recommending that you increase those to two hundred and fifty percent of the Medicare rate for those services. As we discussed in the workshop, most of that change would be paid by third parties, not by individuals. There are changes in fire inspection fees in part because of some changes in in the fire code that requires us to have new inspections with with new fees. There are some limited changes to parks and recreation fees for athletic fees and rentals. Again, as we discussed in the workshop, most of the recreation fees still do not begin to cover the actual cost of service. And then in health services, there are fee changes that reflect the cost to provide services and in some cases, what the allowable billable rates from third-party payers are. Of course, all of these changes are detailed in the budget documents that are posted online and that have been shared with each of you. Here's the chart that tells what's different from what you received two weeks ago. There's an increase in the elections budget of seventy-six thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars. There's an increase in an IT program of a hundred thousand dollars. The sheriff's office, the digital evidence and equipment, there's a three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-dollar change. Four paramedics added at three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars and some additional parks and rec field at fifty-five thousand dollars. Then the decreases, there was in operation, some ARP-enabled reductions of thirty-two thousand in solid waste. Reduction sixty-five thousand, reduction in the sheriff's office of ARP-enabled of six hundred and nine, almost six hundred and ten thousand in EMS, a reduction of a hundred and seventy-seven thousand. And other cleanup items were just under fifty-nine thousand. So the total decrease was nine forty-two, three twenty-three. Here. Here, this shows the enterprise fund approved budgets and the expendable net position to be appropriated, which is what used to be called fund balance, and then it was something else, and now it's expendable net position, but, but you'll see in water and wastewater, uh, the, the amounts of that expendable net position are relatively consistent with the prior years. Customer growth in our enterprise funds, water and wastewater, I, I think the chart really speaks for itself, but continued very strong growth, uh, in both those utility customer groups. Our, our debt service, uh, has increased for the construction of the raw water main and the Northwest Plant Expansion. And there's a debt service increase in the wastewater fund for twenty-twenty-three revenue bonds, and in twenty-twenty-six, there will be for the S R F loan obtained, uh, for the Mulberry Branch Water Reclamation Facility. Again, uh, showing the increases and decreases, uh, in, in the cost of employee compensation and market adjustment, the merit and, and the retirement, again, they, they total in the enterprise fund, one million, four twenty-nine, two oh nine. The recommended fee changes here are the ones really that, that you approved last year to become effective July one of this year, uh, for each of the water and, and wastewater facilities, the capital recovery fees and the, and the, the treatment, the transmission recovery fees in, in each of the two categories.
Steve, hate, hate to stop there again. Has there been a rush? I mean, the contract is all known, this is coming July one. Has there been like a mad rush this month and?
There, there ha- there has not, and, and there was not in, in December either before the, when, when the other changes have, have been made, so. And, and we don't, they can't prepay, they have to actually be applying for service.
I was just curious if they push things to get done quicker to avoid this increase.
We, we, we have, we haven't seen empirical evidence of, of that having happened.
Great, thank you.
So the process here, uh, if the board wishes, uh, a workshop, we could do one at, at one P M in, in two weeks on June second. The public hearing, uh, will begin at three, at your three P M meeting on June second on the budget, and it can certainly be continued, the evening meeting, uh, on, on June sixteenth, and then we would hope that, uh, the, the budgets and rates and fees could, could be approved on the sixteenth. And again, as, as to whether or not the board wants a workshop on, on the first, just, just let us know, and if, if you do, we do need to know what items that, you know, you'd, you'd like us to be prepared to discuss.
What is the preference of the board? Well, let's, let's go one at a time. Uh, could we go back one slide? Well, don't matter.
Yes, sir. I think we can.
Does anybody want an additional workshop on the second at one o'clock?
We've been working on this since February.
Okay. So then three o'clock would be the public hearing? To continue this and be voted on on the sixteenth? And everybody's good with that?
Do we need a motion to schedule a public hearing, or have we already done that?
Madam Clerk?
I have it ready to go, but if, if, um, Mr. Button, nope, then we're good to go, sir.
So I, I don't think it requires a motion.
Okay. Let's move on then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do come in if I can. I, I just want to, uh, thank the manager and the finance director for working on this budget, to, uh, bring it within line, uh, of a no tax increase. I understand the, uh, the logic in looking forward and saying that we would have a forthcoming tax increase. I would just, uh, ask the manager to, uh, continue due diligence along with the finance director. Uh, you've got a year to, uh, to figure out how not to make that happen. And, uh, so, uh, uh, let it just, uh, continue to, to move forward. But I do appreciate you looking at all avenues, uh, for funding this time to be able to do what you, uh, uh, what you presented this evening. So thank you.
All right. Board appointments. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. So, um, in front of you, you have a copy of this particular agenda item uh, with the highlighted areas for your particular by district, and then it will go on to, uh, from reappointments to appointments to, um, other entities' appointments, at-large, et cetera, appointments there. So, sir, when you're ready, if we can go, just for ease of my stuff, if we can go down the list the way it is, then we'll knock them out that way. We don't miss anything or anybody.
Everybody good with that, this list that Darrellin gave us? We're going to do this in order.
That's good.
All right.
District one, sir.
District one, I would.
We need to do the three at the top first.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Substance abuse.
Right.
I'll move to appoint Ms. Austin as the sheriff's appointee.
Nope.
I'm sorry, move to appoint Ms. Long, the replacement of Austin. I'll second.
Hold on, I gotta write these down, because there's gonna be a bunch of them. Williams Cook, okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Done. Planning Board, the at-large seat vacated by Alan Britton.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Howard Stocks. Second.
Williams Cook again, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. He's signify by saying aye. You're with us?
I'm not sure, uh, I didn't see any, he's, he's the logger. I didn't see where, I mean, I, I don't have anything against him, but I'm not sure, um, if y'all, I mean.
He is a surveyor.
And he was an engineering firm?
Yes.
Do we have any, any engineering firms currently represented on the planning board?
I don't believe we do, do we? And I know we've had engineers in the past, and that was a valuable skill set to have there.
Ryan?
I believe he's an Ocean Isle Beach resident.
Yeah.
I can't think of any off the top of my head. The last one I knew hasn't been on.
Alan Lewis, maybe?
Right. And then there was a couple of surveyors after that, but I don't think there are any on there right now. If I can recall.
Okay, well, motion was made and seconded. Just have voted on.
Let's do the vote again, just because I'm.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 I'm fine. I mean.
There's a lot of stuff to appoint tonight.
That, that's an at-large seat, correct?
Right.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes. All right.
Mr. Chairman, in the interest of expediency, would, if no one has any changes to their district appointments, could we do all those on one motion?
Well, it's easier for Darrellin to just do them one at a time.
As long as there is, yeah, as long as there's no change on your, on your reappointment, some.
On the reappointments, yeah, the re.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we could do that, uh, uh, let's do the nursing home.
And that's just District four and five.
Right, both four and five. I'm good with Kimberly McRoy for mine.
I'm good with Patricia McDaniel.
Patricia, and I will make the motion that we approved, uh, Kimberly McRoy and Patricia McDaniel, McDaniel, new whips.
I'll second.
And just as a point of clarification, the last piece of document, last piece of information that I was waiting for from Mr. Brunswick was received today for Mrs. McDaniel.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have Kimberly McRoy and Patricia Daniel both being appointed. Uh, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 I appreciate the people that sign up to do this and all the training and the hard work they have.
That's a hard job, absolutely.
All right, so now we have reappointments. So what does he want to do?
I'll make that, I'm making motion that we appoint, uh, all our districts, if, as long as each, uh, commissioner is supportive of their reappointments.
And I'll second pending everybody having a chance to weigh in on their districts. All good, Randy?
I'm good.
Sykes, Williams. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. Now, move on to vacancies.
No, we still have some at-large appointments, reappointments, excuse me.
Oh, yes, we do, okay.
For the A B C board.
I'm still in the process of turning my page.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, we have at-large appointments. You see the list in front of you? You want to do these? Well, I assume we're doing these one at a time.
Well, what we could do is if there's any that anybody has an issue with, we could vote on that one separately and then vote on the rest of them as a group.
Yeah, it's only the three.
Uh, I have an issue with the planning.
And we'll do them, then we'll do them one at a time.
We'll do them one at a time.
The rest I'm fine with.
Okay, so.
Why don't we do the planning and then approve the rest of them? How about, is that, will, is that okay with you, Darrell?
Sir, thank you.
Planning, and that, and that's an at-large, not an alternate, I believe. It says alternate on the list, but I believe that's.
It is an at-large.
That's an at-large, but.
Correction, sorry.
I will move to reappoint Bill Bittenbender.
I'll second. Do we, uh, I just have one question.
Hold on, hold on. Williams Cook, okay, discussion, Randy?
All right, thank you. Uh, do we, do we know what his attendance is at the meetings, at the planning meeting, planning meetings?
I do not.
All right. Been waiting a long time to get this guy. Yeah, really. We, we tend to forget you're even in the room.
Silent lawyer.
Um, Mr. Bittenbender's attendance was irregular, like seven, eight months ago, but it's been pretty consistent, I would say, the past six, seven months.
Okay.
That was when he had the little heart thing, right?
I believe so.
Yeah, he got a bypass or something.
Yeah, I think he's been at every recent meeting.
I actually just saw him yesterday morning at breakfast.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions? Not a motion and second has been made. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
For one, Sykes. All right. So we're good with, is any, does anybody have any issues with any of the others? Because otherwise we'll do this in one motion.
This is the at-large down.
Well, this would be the A B C board down to the H H S advisory board.
I'm good with them, if everybody else is.
Anybody have anybody they would like to pull?
I just note a minor typo, Larry Mitchell's last name is misspelled here, but I'm sure it's right on the official list. But, um, nobody has any issue, I'll move to approve the remaining reappointments on that, in the section we just.
I'll second.
Williams and Cook, Darrellin, you get that?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Any discussion? Motion second has been made, no discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All right. Now we go down to these appointments by other entities, or did we be approved by the Board of Commissioners?
Make a motion to approve this three.
Three.
I, I was gonna say, are we doing all three, or are we doing them individually?
All three.
I'll second the motion, if everybody's good with them.
Everybody's good with all three?
Yep.
So Thompson and Williams. Okay, um, motion second has been made, any discussion? And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay. Now we are up to finally down to the vacancies, District two.
We already do that one.
Okay, so District two, three.
I think this is the nursing home. You said the applications was coming in.
Two, three, and four. I'm sorry, um, two and three do not have any applications yet, but we are working through process, and I would expect those to be coming in as soon as their training is complete. So the only vacancy is there, but we don't have applications to fill them just yet.
Okay.
All right, so then the only one we have is District five library, correct?
Yes.
I'll move to appoint Stephen Zerio. I'll second.
Sorry, again, fixed me a little bit to write all this down. I have a motion, I have a second, any discussion? And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Done. At-large, Southeastern Econo- Southeastern Economic Development.
I met with a gentleman today who had applied for a different board, but is extremely qualified for this one, and since he, I mean, he was vetted for the other board, but I think he'd be a great fit for this one, and that's Gary Shope.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to second that, that he has an incredible resume, including being Vice President of Research Triangle Park. He holds a Master of Public Administration, but he also has been served both nationally and internationally in business. Uh, that gentleman has, like I say, a very impressive res- uh, resume.
Let me ask a question. Have we asked him if he wants to?
I'd ask him today, yes. He said.
That's what he put in.
Good with it?
That's what he put in for.
He put in, he put in for bid, for bid, but he.
And bid was.
But I asked him today, and he said yes.
Bid has no vacancies nor any coming up. I called Bill early.
Yeah, I asked him today about this, and he said yes. I think if a bid vacancy came up and he needed to resign this to do bid, he would, which would be more important, but he, he seemed very interested in, you know, helping with, you know, and his experience with economic development was pretty impressive.
Very impressive.
So I'll make that as a motion.
I second. You already seconded it. Okay, any discussion? I just spelled his last name, S C.
S.
S H O P E.
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Done. That's all of them, correct?
More.
One on the next page.
We're not done yet.
Just when you thought.
Yeah, I thought we were getting out of here a little.
I think this is Darrellin's least favorite part of her job.
That is a fact, sir.
All right. Uh, and so these are all at-large, right? Equalization and planning at-large and J C P C, they're all at-large. Okay, let's go through them one at a time, because I don't have any names for anything in front of me. So equalization and review.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Bertha Bell has served with distinction for over twelve years on the Board of Equalization Review. She took, uh, she took basically a break from it, uh, but she initially took the place of former Mayor Shloke Carson Durham. And, uh, she served until twenty-twenty-four. She's the mother, if you remember, of, uh, Mr. Leslie Bell, who was our planning director, who's moved to Guilford County and serves in that capacity there. She's very willing to serve. She's also served on the Library Board of Trustees. She would be an outstanding, uh, you know, individual to serve on that, on that board. I'd like to bring her forward if I could.
I'll second that. I had someone else independently who's currently serves on that board that previously served with her, spoke very highly of her service on that.
Right, I got Cook and Williams, uh, Ms. Bertha Bell. Any discussion?
Since I didn't have, we didn't have our application, right?
It was in there, yeah.
Yeah, it was in there.
It was there.
There were so many that they didn't.
I just didn't see, I just didn't.
There's a pile of apps, so.
Yeah. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, planning at-large. What do we got?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, with respect to that position, um, let's see. Oh, I'm sorry, forgive me. Mrs., I'm, I'm looking the wrong thing. Mrs. Cia Harmon, Ms. Ms. Harmon has served on the, as a Board of Commissioner for, uh, Calabash for nine years. In three years, she also served as a planning board member in Calabash, and she served as the chairman of planning, uh, planning and, uh, zoning. And, uh, she's been here over thirty years. And, uh, she's been here over thirty years, she knows the area well, and, uh, she's dealt with a lot of issues, so she's very well-versed with respect to planning and zoning. So I'd like to bring forth Cecilia Herman with respect to that position.
Okay, before we have a second, um, I'd like to bring, uh, to mention Rachel Walker, I think she would do a, a great job, she's been living here over eighteen years, and, uh... Think we do need a woman on the board.
Well, Cecilia Herman is...
I know, well, I'm just, I just think that, looking at them, um... She put in first for the Fire Fee Committee, she didn't put in for planning except for second, so, anybody that didn't do it first, I just took them off. Uh, so...
She told me it didn't make any difference, she was...
I know.
Okay.
I'm just saying what her application says, so... Anyway, I, I looked at the, the list and I felt like the ones that applied ma, their first opportunity was the planning board, it's the ones that I looked at and I felt like Rachel Walker would be a good nomination.
Yeah, let's do these, I have Cecilia Harmon.
Harmon or Herman?
Herman.
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 Herman. Okay.
Cecilia.
Marty made a motion.
And I was prepared to second that.
Uh, okay, Williams?
Unless you want to.
No, I was just about to, but a second's a fact.
I defer to you.
And I said Harmon's her, you're right.
Okay, so Cook, Forte, got that, Darrell? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Nay.
One, one opposed. Alright, JCPC.
Mr. Chairman, I serve on that board, there's two individuals that I have spoken with regarding this position. One is Ms. Martha Jacobs, Ms. Martha Jacobs is a native of Brunswick, she's active with youth as a former schoolteacher and at her church, she's a grandmother and works at Brunswick Community College. Um, that is one individual. The other one, uh, there's two positions, the other one is Ms. Johnna Latin, Ms. Latin has lived here for seventeen years, she served as a middle school teacher in Leland as well as, uh, at Cape Fear Academy. Previously, she was a probation officer in her career, and she was also part of the Children's Home Society. I'd like to bring forth both those individuals for those two positions, I don't know if you want to do it one at a time or how.
Commissioner Cook, can you tell me the name again?
Martha Jacobs.
Thank you.
And Johnna Latin.
Okay.
Is everybody good with doing those in one motion, or did you want to separate them?
No, I, I appreciate anybody, appreciate anybody that wants to be on JCPC. Uh, I mean...
They're both...
Seven years I was on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I will second that, if nobody has any other nominations, I mean, like, I don't know other than personally, but I had Ms. Latin or Latin or however you say her last name.
Latin.
I did, someone I know told, spoke very highly of her, because I found out we had, we were mutually connected and they suggested she would be good, I don't know Ms. Jacobs, but...
Yeah. Motion by Cook, second by Williams, Martha Jacobs, John, John, yeah, Johnna La, I'm running a little problem today.
Johnna.
Johnna Latin?
Yes.
Uh, all those in favor, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Engineer, HHS.
I noticed it says applicant attached, does that mean we only had one qualified applicant?
That is correct, sir.
Is that...
Well, that's a no-brainer.
Larry Mitchell, is that who it was?
Yes, sir.
And I will make a motion, we appoint the sole qualified applicant.
I'll, as I come back, because I serve on the board.
Williams, Cook, any discussion?
And who was the pharmacist, we could vote on...
We could do that, yeah, that's true, um, is that Tammy Waterman?
Going to do them together?
The only one?
Yes, sir.
I will modify my motion to do both.
Dr. Tammy War, uh, Waterman actually is going to attend the HHS Board as a member of the public this evening, because that meeting coincides with ours.
Okay.
So she's going to be there just to be able to observe, and, uh, she's very willing to serve.
It can be hard to find those industry-specific spots, so I'm happy we have...
Alright, so we got Larry Mitchell for the engineer spot, and Dr. Waterman for the pharmacist. And a motion from Williams, second by Cook, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Who else in that?
Yes.
I think...
Is that all of them?
I think that's all.
Uh, I don't see, oh yeah, I'm double checking to make sure we didn't miss anything, it looks like we got everything.
It's a lot of stuff, that's a lot of boards.
Yeah, that is.
I'd, I'd tell you what, Mr. Chairman, this is, this is about how many applications we've had to wait for.
I didn't print them out, but I had...
I didn't print them either.
I got a headache reading through them, there were so many of them.
That's a sixty-five dollar cartridge of... Um... Okay, so that brings us, what appointments aren't completed? Moving on, other business informal discussion. We have nothing, but Mr. Attorney, I understand we have a closed session this evening.
Yes, sir, if I can please get a motion entered into closed session pursuant to one forty-three, three, eighteen, eleven, A, one, three, five, and six, to approve closed session minutes, consult with the attorney, discuss the acquisition of property, and to discuss personnel.
So moved.
Second.
Sykes, Williams, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We will be going into closed session, we'll be back when Brian says we can.
No, sir. Nothing to report.
Move to adjourn.
Back.
Third.
We're out.
Out.